And so Rita, we just want to say thank you. You're keeping them on their toes. You bring some very good issues to the city.
You save for a ton of people that would never normally come to the meeting. And that is very, very important. I highly encourage you to continue participating.
So you do a great service and that's always good. Now, we got into the, started to get into the meat of the agenda. Once you were able to hear from your citizens and your groups. And talked a little bit about this water line project.
Indeed. So basically what they needed was a motion to move forward with the Second Street Water Line Project. And the Second Street Project is going to be, can you work with, okay, hey, Mr. Waggoncell. I appreciate you bringing that up. So Jared was a citizen that reached out to me. Actually, I had like five people reach out to me about the same thing. So when it comes to the commission meetings and streaming and the trouble that we're having getting you guys a nice fluid stream because we want everybody to be able to watch. I actually went down yesterday before the commission meeting because I'm an IT. I wanted to offer any assistance or oversight I could intend. He's an excellent IT for the City of Liberal. Turns out that Jared couldn't set up a wall. I mean, it's the exact setup that I would do, the exact way. Where are the bottleneck pieces of bandwidth that would be? And I'll tell you what, I don't want to throw any company under the bus as an ISP. But it's the same internet company that Rita has had a battle with over the last couple of years. Basically, the problem with this kind of bandwidth that we have going into the police department for our streaming is that at certain points in the days, it goes through a bottleneck. We call it the hourglass. So at 2:00 in the morning with your hourglass, you have this huge amount of bandwidth available at the top, right? Because nobody's using internet. Well, our commission meetings are at 5:30. So as you go to the morning, during the times of day where everybody's using it, all of a sudden, they're being bottlenecked through a small internal pipeline where you can't get any bandwidth in or out. And realistically, to stream properly, we need about three to five megabits per second upload. Whenever I was down there at City Hall yesterday, they're getting about one. So that is why it's so choppy and skips around so much. So we're actually in talks with looking at some other ISPs to provide bandwidth for the City of Liberal. And hopefully, we'll be able to get that adjusted as quickly as possible. One thing I can do, and I will start doing next meeting, is I will start Facebook Live streaming these from my phone, the commission meetings. That way, I at least know that there is some venue where they're going to get a non-choppy streamed service of the commission meetings. So I really appreciate all you guys trying to watch the meetings and stay involved. And I greatly apologize that we're experiencing some technical issues down there that are keeping you guys from being able to enjoy them.
And so when you're talking about the bottleneck, think of it like rush hour traffic. The whole width is still there. That doesn't change. But there's more people on it. And that's what starts to affect the packets of information moving around. And so they're going to look into it. And Jared, I was, might've been the first one. During the meeting, I sent a text and said, uh, stream's not so good. But that, you know, they're working on it and they're going to address it.
We're going to get this figured out as quickly as possible.
It's new. And so give them a chance to get that going.
But thank you very much for your question, Jared. I appreciate you bringing that to life.
And so the water line project.
Yes. So basically, the water line project down Second Street, they needed us to vote to continue moving the project forward. They do already have funds set aside. They still don't actually have an exact cost. So what we did for them by voting this forward was let them get further into the discovery of figuring out exactly how much money this is going to cost if we can figure out where to take it out of the budget and make sure that we have everything budgeted properly. B on the same item was the Washington Street Water Line Improvements. And basically, we need a new line from Hickory to Oak. And then we're going to tee off and run a new line down Pancake. So the project is actually going to loop around and it should end up helping the flows for the water department, or excuse me, the fire department, all their hydrants and be very beneficial to the area. The estimated cost of it right now is $359,000. We should already have everything we need. We're going to look at taking that out of the Infrastructure Reserve Fund, which is a fund that we don't hit that often. So I think, depending on what the total calculated balance is in there, it should be something that we can definitely afford to do.
I'm looking at Taylor's notes here and I believe I've seen this font style before. I think it's called, I think that's called like serial, no, no. It's a font that you see if they don't want you to know who you are. Let me just say it like that.
Well, let's put it this way. This is a, this would be like how if a toddler was tried to be taught calligraphy. That is what my penmanship looks like because I am a much quicker typer than I am a writer.
So I'm glad he knows what he's reading because I don't have a clue. But also, the police department came and body armor, annual taser. I don't know what kind of party this is, but it's, it sounds like it's going to get a little out of hand. No, they were looking for some new equipment last night.
Yep. So Mr. Moenex came up and presented. So the police department had set out $8,000 of previous budgeting aside for body armor improvements in the department. And because of how expensive body armor is, hello, Robert. How are you today, man? Thanks for joining us. Because of how expensive body armor is, you can't ever really buy like 20, 30 vests at once. It would be ridiculous. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars at that point. So what they did is they'll be getting six vests. And the total amount they had budgeted was 8,000. They actually came in at 4,048.73. So just right over half of what they had budgeted for that. And then also, they're going to be getting four new tasers. So I guess this new technology with the tasers is a better non-lethal way of being able to deter a criminal if they get belligerent or violent. And so on that, they also came in under what they had budgeted. And they'll be getting four tasers in the amount of $4,680. So excellent to see that the police department is keeping up to snuff with all their equipment and getting the guys that we have in there, everything they need to be able to succeed and stay safe on the job.
That's our blue line that protects us from those who seek to do harm. And we want to make sure from a public's perspective, we want our guys protected as best possible. Last night, the commission also agreed with that and made sure they had the equipment to protect them. We want them to come home at night too, to their families.
You always got to back a badge. It's a part of our society.
And they did that last night. So just want to add that. Now, the city bus, the city buses, you've got to remember there's some federal money that comes in and takes care of the busing system. And so sometimes there's some policies and they notice some things they want to get taken care of. Making sure they're not misused for trafficking or certain things. So maybe you tell us a little bit about that.
So basically, what it was is it's called the City Bus Anti-Drug and Alcohol Prevention Policy. And basically, the reason that they had to come present this at the meeting, and I hope I'm not butchering the wording on this, is that the company that underwrites that policy changed. So I don't actually, didn't take a note on what the previous company was. But the company that's holding the new policy that we had to push into effect is called Compliance One. So we went ahead. They basically just fluidly explained to us why this is necessary. We basically already had something like this. But from the new company, it does cover other kinds of drugs such as prescription drugs that people could possibly be trafficking or using while they're using the city buses. And so that was a 5-0 vote. And basically, it was just a way of us getting and making sure that we're staying compliant with everything that the federal government requires for us to keep those buses rolling.
And there was a request for Liberal Baseball Association is, works with the youth in the community and provides baseball, but also tournaments. Let me tell you, that brings people to town. When we, when we're able to host state tournaments, regional tournaments, district tournaments, people come, they spend the night, they go watch their kids, they go spend some money. It's a great thing. We need to do as much as possible. But Liberal Baseball asked you last night, made a request.
So Mr. Ron Warren came up. He's the president of the Liberal Baseball Association. And basically, what they were talking about, and I apologize for not bringing the draw out that the commissioners got, but basically, you've got the three ball fields out there. So you have the two smaller ones and then you have the larger one over here. What they're wanting to do is for basically the baseball association and Kids Inc. and any other organization that uses those fields, they're going to build a nice little shed that's basically going to house all of that equipment, make it a centralized location in between the fields that's easy to access and safe to access for all of the equipment. And major props to Ron Warren. He'll be donating a lot of the time and a lot of the expertise on getting that project done because he wants to see it get done correctly. And then what I thought was kind of cool is when he started bringing this up, well, then we got on the topic of sidewalks. And we're like, well, we actually don't have a sidewalk going between the two fields that are on, I believe, the north side and the field that's on the south side. So as part of getting this shed, we're actually probably going to go ahead and run some sidewalks that connect all three of the fields and kind of centralize at that shed. So it should be a nice, exciting project and make those fields a lot more accessible for people that have handicaps or anybody that's trying not to twist their ankle on a rock.
Rocks come up a lot, but it's getting better.
We're not big fans of rocks.
Now, also, now here's something else that does rock. And that was, there's some issues with dams out at Arcalen. And someone might say would like to help out a little bit.
Indeed. You know, so the dam topic over there at Arcalen had kept coming up last week. And we didn't have enough money to set aside to be able to fix all of the issues at Arcalen. Well, our good friends out at Conestoga that own the ethanol plant out there also have a centralized office here in town. Basically, they offered to pay for $37,000 in improvements to finish up all of the necessary improvements out there at Arcalen, get all the dams structurally built back up to where they have structural integrity to them. And it was a business arrangement. They're not just donating that. So they need some water. And their water requirements are much different than other companies would be. So they can take water that is higher in chlorides and it doesn't hurt them at all. So basically, what we're going to be doing, and I hope I didn't write this down wrong because I was trying to keep up as quick as I could on this note taking, that basically, the water we're going to be selling them is at five cents per thousand gallons. And so we're going to sell them water all the way up to that $37,000 mark. They'll pay for the improvements. It benefits them. It benefits us. It was a good deal all around. Always cool in my mind when you can see negotiations like this between a private sector company that employs so many people in Liberal, and the City of Liberal and the community work together. Because in an ideal world, I would think you would see more of that. So it was very cool. We definitely appreciate everybody out there at Conestoga. So thank you very much for the donation on that, guys. We appreciate it.
And to go right along with that was the water park chlorination.
I got to tell you, that was one, I know that's like a mundane thing on there. That was one of the most exciting things to me. Because one of the things, whenever I was getting into the commission, I was learning about all the different public services we provided, man, that water park is just insanely difficult to maintain. It requires so much personnel interaction. They're constantly, I have city guys out there going up and down with the chlorine levels and making sure that the pH is staying in the same range. So what's awesome about this is this is basically going to put in, we have a gas-based system, right? But right now, we've been using chlorine tabs to be able to balance the amount of chlorine in the pool. So basically, we're going to be putting in smart valves that will automatically adjust the chlorine levels to keep them exactly in the lines that we want them to be at. So there's very little personnel involved. This is actually the very cool thing about this. We're estimating that it will only take three years to get this project in the black from spending the money on it. The total cost of everything was $34,538. And basically, it was non-budgeted. But it's going to come out of the Water Department Reserve Fund. So it's definitely something that we had some money there to be able to use for the project. But the analyzer that goes with the smart valves is what's going to control everything should lead to far less problems with the quality of water, far less people getting red eyes or getting burnt from too high of chlorine, or the water being underchlorinated and having germs and things like that in it. So I think that's going to be one of the next steps to take that water park to the next level and get it to where, you know, the more money the park makes, the more improvements we can put into it down the line. So I think that's going to be fantastic. I know I plan on taking my daughter there a lot this summer.
And just so you know, my junior high job was taking care, in the summertime, was taking care of the pool at the La Fonda Motel. And it sounds simple. You just put some chlorine. But I'm telling you, if you don't put enough, you get algae and other things. You put too much, people are, their skin is irritated. It's a window and you got to hit it and it depends on how much water's in the pool and all kinds of things. And so if you can automate that and it self-monitor, you're talking about a really, really cool situation for everyone who enjoys the pool.
Indeed.
And also, another community event, CJ Wedenstein came and talked about a parade for the rodeo.
Indeed, man. I loved having CJ there at the meeting. CJ's always excellent to work with. I love having him on the county commission. Basically, what this voting item on the agenda was, is that for the PRCA rodeo, they're wanting to have a bigger parade this year. And they're wanting it to have, you know, longhorn bulls and more horse riders instead of just having police and fire trucks, which we all love. You know, kids love those in parades. But for adults, there'll be a lot more interactive, cool things, you know, that are actually tied in with what happens during a rodeo. And so the whole reason that they wanted to come to us at this point is because they're wanting to stay very far ahead of this and make sure that they can get everything they want lined up perfectly to have a very smooth rodeo. Instead of waiting until the last minute, trying to plan everything out and then having something fall through and not working out. So basically, it was a 4-0 vote. Jack abstained because he owns something that's involved with that stuff. So he abstained from that. But basically, you know, we wanted to show them support that we're very excited. That PRCA rodeo has been gaining more and more traction every year. The parade will just add that much more interest into it. So very cool stuff and we appreciate your time on that, CJ.
So what we'd be seeing down Candice Avenue, like the running of the steers.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Jumping out of the way and getting off of that. That's one thing that I'd like to do once in my life. And that may be it. You're done if that doesn't work out well for you.
Growing up on the farm and running cattle for, you know, the first major portion of my life, I think I got enough of that out of the way in the pens that I don't ever really want to go to Madrid and try that out.
Well, we did, they used to have a fair event where you went out there and you're supposed to put a saddle on a cow. It's called the Mad Cow Contest. It wasn't a real contest. I didn't know that at first. And it's a joke for everyone who gets suckered into it. And so a bunch of us were out there and let me tell you, your head's on a swivel. And you're seeing people getting knocked over and you're saying, I would help you, but I can't right now. I'm trying to survive myself. But you get out of that thing and finally you calm down. But no, imagine that. What a cool time of year to have a parade and to have animals. Everyone loves the animals.
Yeah. Well, and especially for little kids, you know, because ever since we've had Sophia, we try to go to all the parades in town. Because if nothing else, not for us, but the kids just love that stuff. And I know like my daughter loves animals, any kind of animal she's going to go crazy about. So I, when CJ was talking about that last night, I was literally picturing sitting there beside Sophia on the curb and her seeing these longhorn bulls that she's never seen in real life and just being tickled pink. So I'm very excited about that. I think it's going to be great.
Maybe they can even incorporate some of the 4H people and have people with their rabbits and chickens in a cage and bring those down. Well, that sounds like a really neat deal. And then you added some people to the visitor, the tourism board.
Indeed. So Connie Seagrist, who's our madam mayor, she had to get off of that board whenever she got elected into office. So we voted and actually, I was the one that made the nomination to put, and man, my handwriting's going to kill me on this one. We're going to say Ms. Beza because...
Unabomber font. That's what I was thinking.
Yes, yeah, because the font's horrible. We're going to say Ms. Beza because I can't remember her first name from last night's meeting and the way I wrote it, I cannot read it. But basically, we voted to put her in Connie's place. And then also Jay Bakhta and Claudia Guerrero are going to be put on the panel as well. So it was basically, they had to have one spot filled and then the other two spots were coming up for needing to be redone as well. So we made sure and just got all of them taken care of for them.
And we'll kind of kill two birds with one stone, conference room chairs, but also where the commission meetings may be in the future.
Indeed. So, you know, we have started to have a growing concern because we love how many people have been coming to the commission meetings. That's my favorite thing. When I walk into the commission meeting, it's always like 5, 10 minutes right before the meeting. Everybody else has already been there for a half hour. But what I love is every time I've come to a commission meeting so far, it is packed. And I mean, people standing against the walls, every seat filled, people jamming in the front lobby there. So we started having a discussion a couple of weeks ago about what if we started having these in a different location? And one of the first things that popped in everybody's mind was where the county commissioners have theirs because they have a ton of room. And to be completely honest, if the fire marshal wanted to, he could kick half the people that come to our meetings out because we're well exceeding the capacity of that part of the building.
I wonder who the fire marshal works for and what that looks like.
Has nothing to do with anything. I think he's been preoccupied every night we've had a commission meeting. But basically, we want the community to stay completely involved with this. We want you guys showing up. We want you asking questions. We want you staying involved. So we're going to try to maybe start having these over where the county commissioners have theirs for a while. So that nobody's left out. You know, that broke my heart a couple of weeks ago. I saw that Facebook post where somebody was in the lobby, not able to get in, snapped a picture and said, I wanted to come to the meeting and get involved, but I couldn't because it's too full. So that was the biggest reason why we're wanting to have it over there. The county commissioners were great. They were all completely open-minded to it. The one thing I do want to preface with that is that there's a possibility we may not be able to stream to Zito Media's channel like we do now for the city commission meetings. Not that the stream works well anyway. But we will be on YouTube Live and Facebook Live. That way, you know, everybody can stay as involved as possible. And like I said, I'm going to start streaming these commission meetings on Facebook Live because we want everybody getting to see everything, everything out in the open and transparent. And basically, the other part of that, which was the chairs, we have a meeting room down at City Hall. So like every time we've met with National Beef about the wastewater treatment facility or we're bringing a business in or anything like that, employee negotiations, anything, takes place in this conference room. The conference room itself is fine. The chairs, rough, rough to say the least. And what was cool about this is they had already pre-budgeted it. So it's not something we had to come up with out of thin air. The total of the amount of the chairs was $3,490. But my understanding is that was for 12 chairs. So weirdly enough, chairs are very expensive in today's world. So that actually was a pretty good price, I thought. And I'll be excited about it because we do want, when you're bringing a business in, I hate to say that a lot of it is superficial, but it is. You know, you want to have this professional-looking environment where they feel like, wow, you know, we're being catered to, we're being taken care of, we want to do business here. So hopefully, getting those new chairs in that room will be a good step in the right direction to making sure we have smooth business negotiations and we're comfortable while we're all, you know, figuring things out. Which by the way, hello, Shell. How are you? Thank you very much for the compliment.
Let's put them all in lazy boys. You know, so negotiations go well and I hope that, I don't know if you did or not, but I don't know if this was Southern, but...
Yes, it was Southern Office Supply that won the bid.
So good. It's local business providing the chairs.
Well, what I love too is both of the bids were only sent to local businesses. So it went to Liberal Office Machines and Southern Office Supply. I would've been tickled to go either way on those. So it was great that we got to do business with a local company on that. And thank you very much, Tony, for winning the bid on that and providing us with some new chairs.
And you also, we're talking a little bit about the Willow Tree Golf Course. There was a request a while back on some new carts and some other things. And so you guys were able to further that conversation along.
Indeed. So basically, they're wanting to adjust quite a few of the prices out at Willow Tree, just slightly, just slightly. Because we're actually far cheaper than most other golf courses in the area that people can participate with. So they're wanting to raise the prices slightly on everything, generate a little more revenue out there. I did have that we do need to adjust charter ordinance to accomplish that. But it was voted through 5-0. The next meeting, they'll be bringing us the ordinance. And then after that's done, they'll actually be able to change the prices. So this was the vote before the vote that actually gets the prices risen.
You've got to remember, when some ordinance changes happen, a process kicks in. There's got to be public notice. There's got to be a public hearing. And then it can take effect after all of that. So change happens, but it doesn't always happen the night that they want to do something because of the process and public notification, things like that. So just moving along with the golf course and for a public golf course, it's an 18-hole course. It used to be nine. They've expanded it over the years and a great asset. Every community has to have one.
That's great.
And so we have one. Now, they also talked about, out at the Air Museum, one of the cool things that they've done for several years now is a robotics tournament.
Indeed. Well, and you know what I love about the robotics tournament is even back when I was creating the Drone Academy with the Mam Foundation Board, that robotics tournament was still gaining traction. Man, that thing is off the charts now. I mean, they have so many teams competing. It brings in so many people from out of town. It's a tremendous event. And basically, last night, they needed us to approve, and I think we did lump it into one, but three separate expenditures. One was for catering. One was for new audio/video equipment to be able to film and stream everything. And then the other was for, and actually, I do have the amounts here. So the catering got one. The bid went to Big Bites in the amount of $1,175, which was amazing because some of the other bids we had, that was less than half. And anybody who's had Big Bites here in town knows it is fantastic food. So that was phenomenal. The second one was the sponsor, the tournament winner. So the tournament winner, the team gets, you know, a prize there. And then there's quite a few other prizes for second and third. The total amount of that was $3,000. And then the purchase of the new video equipment was $1,723.73, which I can tell you from experience of being in IT, is cheap. That is cheap. You can spend $5,000 on a camera and audio equipment real quick. So I was actually thrilled to see how well they kept all of the prices down on everything. Because the cheaper they can put it on and still do a great job, the more money it generates for the Air Museum and the taxpayers of Liberal. And by the way, if you guys haven't checked out that Air Museum as of late, check it out. They have done a ton of work out there. They're in the middle of a rebranding project. It's under a new sense of direction from Scott, who's the Air Museum Director. Sarah Thompson is an amazing employee out there. She does a great job, very personable. And that Air Museum is really starting to re-become kind of a shining beacon of something that you can take your family and do in the community. So highly recommend going out there and checking that out. And that robotics tournament is going to be sweet. So don't miss it.
And I just want to say, congratulations to Big Bites on winning the bid on that. I love Big Bites. I love their food. And so now they're going to get to serve and maybe introduce themselves to some new people through that. So congratulations to our local business, working with our public entities for the betterment of the whole community.
Well, and I love the owner. Because Big Bites owner, I want to say his name's Juan. I hope I'm not getting that wrong because for some reason, I'm drawing a blank. But I've dealt with him on several occasions. You know what I love about guys like him? He owns three businesses in town. He owns the hamburger place, Big Bites, and the new Hispanic restaurant, the seafood restaurant over there across from Arby's. That is awesome.
That too, and that's good too.
Yes, all three of them are fantastic. And I just, I really appreciate when I run into businessmen like that, that have an opportunity to own businesses in several places and instead choose to double down and then double down again in our community and just keep opening new things for us to have here. So thank you very much for that, man. We really appreciate all the business you do here in Liberal.
And it comes to food, local food specifically, but food anywhere. I may be the skinniest fat guy that you know because I like a lot of food and I eat a lot of different kinds of places. But every one of those places, they're all, not just good, they're good at what they do.
Yes.
They're each different. And if you like...
Yes, it is awesome.
Mexican seafood. Mexican seafood.
Yes.
That's where you wanna go try, that, it's right by Arby's, uh, you can't miss it, it's where, well, I always says the old wrestler's thirty-three, so if you remember that, that's where they're at.
Going back there.
Yeah.
Well, the only reason I laugh so hard about you saying you're the skinniest fat guy you've ever met, um, I always tell people I'm skinny fat because everybody I run into is always like, oh my gosh, you're so trim, and I'm like, trust me when I say I'm skinny fat, no muscle on this body, none. If I had to do any kind of workout, I would be screwed.
Now, the final thing we wanna talk about, probably one of the biggest, that, uh, the biggest interest, and that is, uh, they approved the interim city manager's contract last night.
Indeed.
It was in the ba, it was in the packet of information, so it was all out there before the vote, it was all out there, and I believe someone said they might've even read it. I think they even read it.
I think they read it, yeah, I can't even, I, I just can't do it without laughing because, my god, the, the last contract for the last city manager just threw us all through the wringer so much and just created such a black eye for the community that we just couldn't help ourselves, you know, with, when we went back in, it was the second meeting, I believe, we had an executive session about Calvin's contract, um, and discussed quite a few things in it. Cal is so easy to work with. That man has a genuine interest in trying to help this community and do the best job he can. And, and from our position, the community, a lot of you guys might not know Cal, I definitely recommend reaching out to him and getting to know him and giving him an opportunity to convince you that he is great for this job, um, in the interim slot. Um, what I loved about it is, the, the first contract that we had for Cal did have quite a few things that some of us thought were, were not really necessary for an interim, and Cal literally was just like, take him out, take him out. He's like, I'm not trying to get rich off this, I'm not trying to take advantage of anybody, um, I'm just trying to make sure and, you know, uh, that I'm compensated better than, you know, what he was at his previous position. So all of us read the contract, every single clause in it, all of us made sure the necessary adjustments were made, uh, there's no severance package, no severance package, um, and basically, and I wanna...
Well, he looked it up, I just wanted to clarify, there's a question, it's interim city manager.
Interim, yeah.
And the contract went through July, and after July, it becomes a month-to-month thing until, uh, the city commission chooses a permanent city manager. So this is an interim contract.
Yes, I apologize for that, um, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Jackie, so we could clarify. Um, one thing I do wanna note about Cal, you know, he hasn't expressed any interest in wanting to be the permanent city manager for this community. What he's actually expressed interest in is he wants to do a good enough job at this here that he can be on, on the list with the League of Municipalities to help out other communities that might end up in this predicament down the line. So Cal's a very genuine guy and very giving in that way. Um, his new base salary of his new contract is one hundred and four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, so comes in very shy of what our previous city manager's contract was, as an interim's contract should.
Have a question about the other two contracts, Taylor, if you wanna answer about whether or not the city will end up paying the other two contracts. One, we know has been paid.
Yep, that, that is Al Sil's, his was paid in full, um, and, and, you know, I, um, first of all, all of these videos that Earl and I do, when I speak, it is my opinion as myself as a commissioner, I'm never trying to speak on behalf of the entire commission because that would be horribly inappropriate. Um, you know, with the Al situation, it's something that, in my, in my opinion for